We'll call this meeting to order at 7:03 PM. This is a work session in the governing body of the borough of Bloomingdale, Tuesday, March, May 3, 2016. I'd ask at this time if everyone can please rise to salute our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Don Leary.
Here.
Councilmember Sandema.
Present.
Costa.
Here.
De La Ripa.
Here.
Demoto.
Here.
Councilwoman Hudson excuse me. Yasi.
Here. Also with us Jane McCarthy, our municipal clerk, and our borough attorney Fred Semra. It's an official meeting of the governing body of the borough of Bloomingdale on November 28, 2015. The date and time place of this official meeting was faxed and mailed to all local news media and posted at Borough Hall. There's no need for an early executive. We do not have any non-agenda items, so therefore I need a motion for early public comment reserved for agenda items. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come up. State your name and address for the record. How are you, sir?
Hi. My name is Greg Gellner, 16th of Feo Street.
Greg, I'm just going to interrupt you, just so the council's aware, you're going to speak about the pipeline.
Yes.
Which is not an agenda item, but I'm fine with letting Greg go on. Everyone good with that?
Since it is a budgetary item.
I'm sorry?
It is kind of a budgetary item.
Well, you could consider it a budgetary item, but it's not an agenda item. So floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you. I just want to read a brief statement. For over the past year, I've been working with the Coalition Against the Pilgrim Pipeline in opposition to a crude oil pipeline that would extend from Albany to Linden, passing through about 30 towns in New Jersey. It would pass through environmentally sensitive areas and near water supplies in North Jersey, including the Wanacue and Monstrual reservoirs, which supply drinking water to Bloomingdale. Elected representatives of about 20 of these towns, including Councilman De La Ripa, have been attending meetings with Mayor Harris of Chatham Township. They have formed the Municipal Pipeline Group, and two of its objectives are to fund the environmental study and a legal defense fund. The environmental study would be performed by Princeton Hydro, which has extensive experience in natural resource management and environmental engineering. One of the intents of the study is to help convince the DEP to not issue permits to Pilgrim Pipeline. I think it's obvious that a joint effort is more efficient, both cost-wise and time-wise, than individual efforts by each town. The costs involved are estimated to be about $75,000. To date, 12 towns have committed to an average contribution of $5,000 each. Therefore, the Municipal Pipeline Group is close to its objective. It is hoped that Bloomingdale can also contribute $5,000, or if that is not possible due to budget constraints, possibly a lower amount. In the long run, it is to Bloomingdale's advantage and that of the other towns in northern New Jersey. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Greg. I'll just respond. We're going to be introducing the budget this evening, and, you know, we have cap issues and how much we can go up and the like, and, you know, and that portion of the meeting, I'll talk a little bit about, you know, pension increases, health insurance, and so on. All I can commit to you now is that, once the budget is adopted, that we will look at our legal line to see if there's room for something. And if not, then we'd have to wait till later in the year when the borough's allowed to do transfers if there's surplus. So that's kind of where we are.
All right.
You know, I don't know if anyone else has anything to say?
I just want to say, obviously, we, you know, we, you know, we've passed an ordinance, you know, I think we generally support it. It's just a question of how much we can contribute financially.
I understand that.
Okay. So, again, the budget adoption will be June 14, and after that, we can, you know, do a little more investigative, see if we could swing something, so.
Okay. Very good. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Greg, very much. Anyone else an agenda item?
Linda Huntley, 6 Van Damme. The Resolution 216.5 for the authorization for contract with Phoenix Advisors.
Yes.
You're going to go out for permanent bonding?
There will be permanent bonding next year. We, it's a $950 contract, and Phoenix offered a proposal to serve as our continuing disclosure agent and independent registered municipal advisor of record. To stay compliant with our continuing disclosure agreements is crucial to maintaining market access. So we're not doing permanent bonding this year. Due to 1997 Security Exchange Commission promulgated rule, you know, list the Rule 15(c)(12), and the requirement to file continuing disclosure became a necessity. Now, the SEC has set the requirement that anyone providing advice to an issuer of municipal debt be registered with and regulated by the SEC. In the past, advice in various forms has been promulgated by auditors, bond councils, et cetera. In order to continue the proper flow of suggestions and recommendations between your professionals and you as an issuer of municipal debt, you should designate a registered SEC firm as your independent registered municipal advisor, or IRMA, I-R-M-A. And that is what we're doing this evening, to do our disclosure statements, and we will go permanent bonding in 2017.
Okay. So then for the, I guess, the lights and all the other things, even, I guess, more slates?
Yeah, I'm not sure what's all on there, but yeah, whatever the notes, it's quite a bit.
Okay.
It'll be substantial.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, motion to close?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Reports. Jane, anything for us?
Just a reminder, the Memorial Day Parade is May 30, and it will be going from Sloan Park. Line up at 8:30, step off at 9:00, and we'll proceed to Butler.
Right. In an effort not to duplicate services, as it always has been in the history, we are going to gather at Sloan Park, rather than Van Damme and march to Sloan, and, you know, less than an eighth of the parade, here's what you do, because everyone's all backed up to the traffic light. We're going to gather in front of Sloan Park. Line everyone up, Reeve, Ryerson, and in front of the park. The veterans will lay a wreath, and that's all we will be doing at Sloan, and then moving to Butler. And hopefully become tradition, where we'll reverse that next year, you know, just keeping, you know, so it's not so redundant. I think that makes sense. Okay? But thank you, Jane, for organizing. Actually, the chief, myself, and you will have a meeting tomorrow to fine-tune the lineup and the like, so thank you. Anything else, Jane?
That's it.
Fred, anything for us?
Nothing new to report, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. Council members, anyone?
Just a reminder, at the Bloomingdale Foundation for Literacy Dinner Dance is May 14, Saturday, May 14, Glenwell Country Club.
Wonderful.
Please come out and support.
Yeah, it's, the menu's quite impressive, actually. Yes?
Yeah. I know Councilwoman Shortman, who is not here tonight, but I know you as well, and a couple other people, had expressed concerns about, because it's a topic in the news lately about lead in drinking water.
Right.
Specifically about the schools. I'd been in contact with both Maria Cardnell, the current interim superintendent, and George Hagel, the business administrator. And actually, I caught them just as they were getting the first round of results, and they'd already sent their water out for testing. And only one test came up as a problem, which indicated a single sink. They were gonna, you know, clean the faucet, you know, because you don't know what's, you know, apparently, they didn't, you know, they just ran the tap and sucked what came out. So they were going to retest that, and hopefully they'll be clean. But in general, you know, our kids are drinking water that doesn't have an enormous amount of lead.
Right. And actually, Pete Coriel, our Board of Health, called me the end of last week to report to me exactly that, and was impressed that we were one of the only Board of Eds who were proactive in doing this testing. Many have not. So we're in a good place, so, thanks, Rich. Good. Anything else?
Nope.
Anyone else? Just a couple items. As you know, we keep the digital sign boards up today as best we can. Junior Academy sign-ups, deadline is the 27th of May. Animal Shelter Open House is May 15. This past weekend, we had the Senior Center Open House, which was very well-attended, and we also did a garden dedication to Sonny Brennan, who, you know, was the leader of our beautiful gardens. We presented her a key to the city, as well as a certificate to her and all the master gardeners who were on that. I would say out of 30 master gardeners, all but four were there. It was quite impressive. And then inside, they had vendors and things, and it was a very, very nice day. Reminder, cleanup day is this Saturday, 10:00 AM, Boge Pond. One other thing, next meeting we'll have on the agenda, there's an entity called the Anti-Bullying Squad, and we will be, the borough, it doesn't cost us anything, we will be coming members of this squad, and will be sworn in at our next meeting, and I think we are going to be the first municipality in the state of New Jersey as member of the Anti-Bullying Squad. I turned it over to the Board of Ed. I believe they're going to try to do the same, and it's just an important issue, and I think if we take the lead on it, it's only going to help that issue. So that'll be on our next agenda, and I would hope any public who's here, we can have them sworn in as members of the squad, the Anti-Bullying Squad. Okay? So thank you very much. Moving along, I need a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Pending items, second and final reading, public hearing ordinance 11/2016, updating certain municipal fees. Public notice statement, please.
This, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in this building, published in the Herald News. Copy is available to the public, so the motion may be made that it be read by time.
And who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And second, that's an ordinance of the borough of Bloomingdale and the county of the state of New Jersey amending chapter 2, Administration, and Chapter 11, Building and Housing of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale, update, to update certain municipal fees.
Thank you. I need a motion for a public hearing?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to 11/2016? This is simply, as we do each year, amending various fees throughout the borough. Like, for example, we added the community garden fee of $25, and a couple other small housekeeping items in this ordinance. Seeing no one, motion to close?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And who moves to adopt?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Costa.
Yes.
Demoto.
Yes.
De La Ripa.
Yes.
Sandemeyer.
Yes.
Yasi.
Yes. New Business, 11A, adoption of Resolution 2016.5.
It's going to be three, because I gave one and two in the consent agenda.
That's fine. 5.3, Senior Center Change Fund. This is simply Resolution to allow $50 to be available for change-making within the senior programs. And who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Do you want a roll call? Let's do it, money. All in favor?
Aye.
Good. 11B, I need a motion, 2016.5.4, hiring of a new shelter assistant. This is a floater position. This is not a new addition. This is an individual who will float when other part-timers need time off. So it's not an increased cost. The only time this person will be there is, again, to fill a floater situation for shelter volunteers. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Demoto.
Yes.
De La Ripa.
Yes.
Sandemeyer.
Yes.
Yasi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes. You good? C, 2016.5.5, we're authorizing to hire Ken Nelson to prepare a formal housing report. This is a supplement report. First, let me ask for a motion.
One more.
Second? Any discussion? Just so everyone knows. At the request, the Nelson Group has prepared a proposal for planning services related to the requirement, requirements by the special master, Christine Caphone, regarding the current court proceedings about Bloomingdale's affordable housing obligation. Their prospective need will be met through four projects, one existing, two proposed, modifying the B-1A resulting in 27 units, all the things that were proposed to us. What they're requesting is, the borough should submit a memo to the special master regarding its position reconciling its obligation as stipulated by the eConsult solution and the housing obligation report prepared by David Kinsey for the fair share. So they want a report by Ken as to why there's a difference, an opinion of why there's a difference in those two numbers. As you know, we joined the consortium, and eConsult Solutions came up with our number, and, which was, you know, below 200, and the fair share housing center numbers were 741. So it is a professional opinion that the borough has made in good faith effort to work towards satisfaction of their affordable housing, and should continue to receive protection. This is a recommendation from the special master to the judge, but they do want this report, which we're authorizing this evening, to do an analysis on why the difference in the numbers. And I'm confident at the end of the day will be the vacant land adjustment and the high lands preservation, and this is not to exceed $1,500, which will be paid out of escrow. That's what we're doing. So we had a second on that. That's our discussion. I need a roll call, please.
Councilmembers De La Ripa.
Yes.
Sandemeyer.
Yes.
Yasi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Demoto.
Yes. Item D is Resolution 2016.5.6, again, authorizing contract for Phoenix Advisors as borough's disclosure agent, independent registered municipal advisor, as explained during the public portion of the meeting. Who makes that motion, please?
Second?
Again, any discussions? It's a $950 annual contract. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sandemeyer.
Yes.
Yasi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Demoto.
Yes.
De La Ripa.
Yes. Item E, I need a motion for Resolution 2016.5.7, adoption of a letter of map revision. As you all know, our mapping of the Oakwood area and Glenwell Lake portion has been accepted. Be an August 23 effective date. We just need to ratify that by resolution, and ordinance will do in a moment, but this resolution is simply authorizing the borough to adopt the letter of map revision issued by FEMA officially remapping this area. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Yasi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Demoto.
Yes.
De La Ripa.
Yes.
Sandemeyer.
Yes.
Yasi.
Yes.
And that would be May 17.
There's no problem in having that done before the map revision? No. No, it's part of the process. All right.
You read the title.
I actually read the title, yes. So we're good.
Okay.
Okay? Do you need a?
I'm good.
We're good? Thank you. Item G, authorization for promotion of James Mara, DPW, from driver laborer to driver. This is simply a housekeeping item. Yes. That's fine. Yeah, I spoke to him.
He signed.
He was rice noticed, chose not to be present. Simply what we're doing, after we finished negotiating this year's contract, and Councilman De La Ripa prepared the new salary guides, finance pointed out that there was the position of driver labor not in the salary guide. And after further investigation, what had happened was, back in 2009, before the last contract, the intention was, they got rid of, if you all remember the stories, they got rid of all these categories and made it driver and then laborers, two separate positions. And at the time, the intention was for Jim Mara to be a driver, because that's what he does. He drives our sanitation truck. The problem is, the borough, back in 2009, never did the housekeeping part of what we're doing tonight, officially making the promotion. So it's easier for us to do this than to reopen the contract and put this position back in. It is like a $40 annual difference in salary between driver laborer and driver, so Mr. Mara's getting a popping $40 annual increase in salary. This is just housekeeping, and that's how we negotiated the new contract with the category, so we're not doing anything other than fixing just what was, probably fell through the cracks in 2009. Okay? So I need a motion to approve that. Second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item H, introduction to 2016 municipal budget. I need a motion to introduce ordinance number 13/2016, first for the cap bank. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Again, this is just acknowledging ordinance to local government cap law basis, and that's what we're doing here. Do you want a roll call on that? Let's do a roll call.
I think this, this is an ordinance, a second and final.
Say tonight as adoption, June 14.
Councilmembers Costa.
Yes.
Demoto.
Yes.
De La Ripa.
Yes.
Sandemeyer.
Yes.
Yasi.
Yes.
And that would be calendar year 2016, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I need a motion for Resolution 2016.5.8? Is it? Eight? Am I right? Eight, eight, right?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Introduction of the fiscal year 2016 municipal budget. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second? Discussion, and I'll just give some brief highlights. Again, we'll have a public hearing for public input, at which time our finance treasurer will be here, as well as our auditor. In a nutshell, the municipal budget versus 2015 increased $350,000. The bulk of that increase is a result of the following. Salary and wages of approximately $94,000, which is just contractual, and a lot of that was police with promotions we had to make with retirements. Insurance, health insurance, $57,000 increase. Our general liability and property casualty was $5,000 increase. Our tipping fees was an $8,000 increase. Pensions, roughly $45,000 increase, and Social Security, about $33,000. The biggest impact to the budget was the addition of $110,000 in our reserve for uncollected taxes. Just a little history on that. Back in 2012, prior governing body cut $300,000 out of the budget to make cap and went to accelerated tax sale. What that means is, borough has to be prepared for, if by December 31st, you haven't collected all your taxes, how are you going to pay the bills? So in the budget, you have a line item of $300,000, which is a reserve for uncollected, so you could pay your bills. In 2012, the council cut that and had a tax sale, like December 15th to 20th, so that you get your 100%, okay? The problem with that is twofold, and this is why we're getting off that. Last year, we put back $190,000 in the budget, okay? And this year, we have to put another 110, based on formulas, based on your collection rate. So last year, we put it in based on 99%, and we were at 98.2%, thus the reason we have to put in more in the budget. So out of our $300,000 total increase, 110 was to go back on, to get off the accelerated sale. Again, the primary reasons are, if you go more than three years of doing this, we got off last year, you no longer can self-examine. Everything has to be submitted to the state, and the state has to review and approve your budget prior to introduction. So we don't want, we want to be able to self-examine like we always have. And number two is, you lose a heck of a lot of interest. We now have a tax sale in June, July, or August, whenever we choose. So we had enough money in the budget to pay the bills, but now we'll have a tax sale, whether the resident makes whole or a third party buys it, and there's interest for that period of time. And we lose an average of $25,000 to $32,000 annually in interest, the old way. So that's very important to realize that. $110,000 is to get off the old accelerated sale to build our reserve for uncollected. Then there's the revenue side. We had a loss of $2.2 million in assessed value, which, if you take our dollar-for-tax rate, municipal, it's a $230,000 loss of revenue that you must then share amongst the residents. Courts were down a little bit. Recycling was down a little bit. But the biggest, again, was the increase in expenses, I explained, and the loss of revenue, roughly, you know, $300,000. So we were able to come in, there will be a tax increase of $55.69 on the average household with this budget. I want to thank Rich and Ray and Sherry and our auditors for doing this. We are using a fair amount of surplus, about half a million dollars of our surplus, to keep it at this level. And again, we'll have more detail upon the public hearing. So that's where we are, and I apologize. Did you have a motion in a second? You did, right? And any further discussion? I just want to give a recap for the public, but we'll have more detail at the public hearings. Council have anything? Okay? And Tony, I know you wanted to, on the punch clock thing, we had presentation?
Yes.
Again, we're confident we'll be able to do DPW, okay? It's not a specific line item, but we're confident we'll be able to do, once we adopt, figure July-ish, we should be able to get that rolling. I know that was one of your concerns. Okay? Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmembers Demoto.
Yes.
De La Ripa.
Yes.
Sandemeyer.
Yes.
Yasi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Demoto.
Yes. Okay, thank you. And then two more items under new business. First, now I need a motion for introduction of ordinance 14/2016, capital improvement under the general fund. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
I have it moved by De La Ripa? Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Costa. Any discussion? Again, just to give a recap on this, what we are doing is a capital ordinance in the net amount after grants of $975,000. And what we're doing is 350,000, authorizing 333,000 for road paving, and that will be limited, that would be including but not limited to Pleasant View Ave., Pearl Street, Oak Street, Grove Street, Victor, Anna Rose Court, and Matthews Drive, which is a, not Matthews, what are you, Terrace?
Terrace.
Matthews Drive is actually a little tiny road right off Pleasant View. And there's a method to our madness in our 10-year road paving plan. We try to finish quadrants before we move on. I have a move by Delaripa? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, and by Costa. Any discussion? Again, just to give a recap on this, what we are doing is a capital ordinance in the net amount after grants of $975,000. And what we're doing is 350,000, authorizing 333,000 for road paving, and that will be limited, that would be including but not limited to Pleasant View Ave., Pearl Street, Oak Street, Grove Street, Victor, Anna Rose Court, and Matthews Drive, which is a, not Matthews, what are you, Terrace? Matthews Drive is actually a little tiny road right off Pleasant View. And there's a method to our madness in our 10-year road paving plan. We try to finish quadrants before we move on. This also includes, this bond doesn't include, but remember, we're paving the balance of Reeve and Ryerson in our community development block grant this year. So with Oak being done, that quadrant is done. Last year, we did Capitoline, High Street, and by doing Pearl, Pleasant View, that quadrant's done. So it's quite impressive. We'll get quite a bit done. The second item is Walter T. Bergen Drainage. $224,000 is being authorized, offset $100,000 grant from the county for drainage at Walter T. Bergen. We're also doing $240,000 for various field improvement equipment, flood mapping program. I want to remap the rest of the town like we did Oakwood, because I feel there's inconsistencies in the flats and by Knolls Road, that we can, again, save people quite a bit of premium getting before successful there. Cameras, security cameras for Department of Public Works, Walter T. Bergen, and Tlaser Field. Exercise stations to be added to the walking track. Generators, this was the big one. We received a grant of $140,000 for generators, permanent at Fireman's Hall as a shelter and Senior Center as a shelter. So this, and two large portables for our pump stations. So this money is to fund the FEMA grant first, and then we'll get reimbursement on that. An oil separator, it's kind of complicated, DPW stuff. Per our JIF, we have to relocate underground gas lines, 44,000. Insulation occurs located on Wallace, as well as, we're going to be doing dredging of the brooks along Van Damme from Walnut to Van Damme-Chestnut. We are allowed, per DEP rule, to dredge near culverts, so we will be deepening those areas that tend to drain quite slowly, and hopefully we'll have success there. We'll be dealing with a serious drainage issue at 278 Andrews Court, which is a problem as a result of a borough system, needs to be resolved. DPW, one DPW vehicle, replacing a 2002 Mason dump with 80,000 miles, rust, engine problems and the like. An OEM truck, and that's where we are. So again, introduction tonight, second and final will be May 17. And I just wanted to give you a recap of what we're doing. The one point is, we're borrowing 975,000, but in the budget, we're paying off over $1,033,000, so net debt. You know, we're not borrowing more than we're paying down, so as small as it may be, there will be a continued reduction in debt, as we've always achieved. Any further comments or questions?
Well, plus, some of that, it will be repaid through grants and...
Well, right. You know, your total bond, $1,024,000 net, you offset that by $240,000.
Okay, so that are the 900.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I thank you all, and a roll call, please.
This is on 14?
This is on the first one, 14, yeah. I know, I was talking a long time.
Councilmember Sandemeyer.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Demato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
And that would be a bond ordinance providing various 2016 capital improvements by and in by the borough of Bloomingdale and the county of the state of New Jersey appropriating $1,024,850 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $975,000 bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the costs thereof.
And then item J is introduction of 15, 2016, capital improvement for the utility, second and final, on May 17 as well. Who moves that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. To introduce by title, any conversation? Just real briefly, there's three items in this bond. Total amount's $91,000 in the bond. Replacement of the four-inch truck, replacing a 2005 vehicle with severe engine problems and oil pan issues, and that'll be done. And $6,000 filing cabinets, and $8,000 for alarm upgrades for the pump stations. We're having communication issues, and we need to update the alarms on those systems as well. So that's $91,000 in total new debt. I had my note, and I apologize, we're paying off in the budget $165,000 in debt. So again, there's still gonna be a net reduction of $74,000 in overall debt in the utility. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Yazdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Demato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes.
Sandemeyer.
Yes.
And that's a bond ordinance providing for various 2016 water and sewer utility improvements. Buying in the borough of Bloomingdale and the county of the state of New Jersey appropriating $96,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $96,000 bonds or notes to finance the costs thereof.
Thank you. And I need a motion for a late public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any wish, please come on up.
Van Dantley, 86 Van Damme. For the capital improvement general bond.
Yes.
The drainage, the 114 drainage, that's gonna be at Walter T. Bergen, is that being paid out of the Rose Fund?
The, well, we got a grant to offset most of it. The balance, it's recreation, it's not specifically written in the ordinance, I mean, it can be. The Rose Fund, though, is taking a hit. I mean, you can't keep going there when you took 80 grand of DPW salary wages, the light out of there, so, you know, there's not a lot left to take from there. So right now, I cannot answer that question.
Because I recall when this was first discussed, that any of the work that was going to be done at the Walter T. Bergen School for Drainage and Lighting, all-inclusive, was gonna be paid for.
Well, lighting, the governing body passed an ordinance that said it must be paid by the Rose Fund.
But the drainage, that was discussed, the drainage was also supposed to be taken care of by the Rose Fund.
I don't recall that discussion. I don't, actually, I'll be honest, I do not support that discussion, because we've done nothing but tapped that for, you offset 80,000 in salary wages, you know, so...
Because the salary wages were being done by people, the DPW working on the fields. That's why that was decided.
My position, I think the Rose Fund is more of a maintenance item to keep it out of your current operating budget, not capital improvements. So to answer your, honestly, as of today, I cannot answer that question. If we come to a point where we have more revenue, where we could bring in payroll back in, then I would support that idea.
So in other words, you're saying no, because you don't anticipate having any salaries coming out of the Rose Fund?
For 2016, absolutely correct.
And even though, the only reason that was done in the first place was because there was...
To make cap.
Well, it was also because, it was also because, as, you know, I mean to interrupt you, I appreciate it.
No, no, I just...
You don't have to interrupt me either.
Yeah, I just...
Was because the cost of the DPW doing work at the field was being put into the Rose Fund, which is where it belongs. Second question, there was, you said $200,000 or something else at Walter T. Bergen?
No, that was the grant. That was $224,000 for drainage. And then, oh, no, the, there was other items. For Walter T. Bergen, drainage, exercise stations. We're doing $20,000 for these exercise units, so as people can walk the track, they can stop at these stations and do various type of exercises. We're gonna be able to do five or six within our proposed budget here. But it's all part of the, you know, the same bond. I think that was it for Walter T. And then cameras, but not just for Tlaser. That's Tlaser, Walter T., DPW yards, Senior Center, needs to put cameras in places.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're doing the executive session, two matters in negotiation, one matter attorney-client privilege, and consideration of executive session business will be allowed public comment. May 17, our next meeting, work session, June 14. Reminder, last dated registered to vote, May 17. I need a motion to go into executive.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're doing the executive session, two matters in negotiation, one matter attorney-client privilege, and consideration of executive session business will be allowed public comment. May 17, our next meeting, work session, June 14. Reminder, last dated registered to vote, May 17. I need a motion to go into executive.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?